The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that both verbal and written statements have equal weight. So if somebody is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, you can submit that electronically where it will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov. That address is actually on the screen now. The purpose for this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final Nejipnis permit decisions. The permittees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov if you wish to receive a copy. We will also post any final decision on our website. Please note that the public comment period will end at 11:59 PM on February 13, 2023. If you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and we will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. In view of the time limitations, I am asking each speaker to initially limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may also testify once we have heard from every person here who wishes to give testimony. If time permits, and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing, and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person here to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or noon, whichever comes first. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by one of our staff, Marcelo Gracia. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Jonathan Laquetron, who will provide an overview of Microsoft Teams. After that, Joe Manick will then give some factual information about the Nejipnis permits. Joe is a section chief within the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-Treatment Permitting. Marcelo?
Hola. Abriré la audiencia en este momento. Deje que el registro muestre que la hora es 10:05 y la audiencia pública ya está oficialmente abierta. Tengan en cuenta que grabaremos esta junta. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo para la renovación del permiso para descarga de aguas de superficie del desbordamiento de alcantarillado combinado del Sistema de Eliminación de Descargas de Contaminantes de Nueva Jersey para la autoridad municipal de servicios públicos de North Bergen, planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales de Woodcliff y la ciudad de Gutenberg. A menudo, usaremos el acrónimo NJ Nejipnis como nos referimos al Sistema de Eliminación de Descargas de Contaminación de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es Susan Rosenwinkle. Soy la oficial de la audiencia pública y la directora de la Oficina de Permisos de Agua de Superficie y Pretatamiento de la División de Calidad del Agua en el Departamento de Protección Ambiental, también denominado el Departamento o NJDIP. Jonathan Laquetran es el administrador de casos para uno de los permisos y brindarás instrucciones sobre cómo dar testimonio hoy, mientras que Joseph Manick presentará una descripción general de los permisos pertinentes. También hay aquí hoy muchos empleados de NJDIP que son parte de programas CSO o de otros programas en el NJDIP. Ahora brindaré información general sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública, lo que tomará unos cuatro minutos. Luego, Marcelo Gracia presentará esta información en español. A continuación, proporcionaremos una descripción general de Microsoft Teams y un resumen breve de los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información introductoria tomará unos veinte minutos en total. Cuando se establecen las regulaciones de Nejipnis, el Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey, 714A Subcapítulo 15, esta es una audiencia pública no contenciosa, lo cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonio como parte de nuestro proceso regulatorio. El propósito de esta audiencia es brindar al público interesado, incluido a esas comunidades afectadas, la oportunidad de ser escuchados con respecto a estas actividades de los borradores de los permisos propuestos. El departamento aceptará declaraciones verbales y por escrito el día de hoy. Tengan en cuenta que las declaraciones por escrito y las verbales tienen la misma importancia. Así que si alguien no se siente cómodo de hablar y solamente tiene una declaración por escrito preparada, puede enviarla de forma electrónica y se le dará la misma importancia que a un testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para enviar comentarios por escrito es dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov. Ahora añadiremos el correo al chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es recibir sus comentarios y preocupaciones. El departamento responderá todos los comentarios significativos y pertenientes, tanto verbales como por escrito, en un documento de respuestas a comentarios que se publicará como parte de las decisiones generales sobre los permisos de Nejipnis. Los permissionarios y todas las personas que hayan presentado comentarios recibirán una copia electrónica del documento con la determinación final, siempre que nos haya indicado su correo electrónico. También entregaremos copias a quien los soliciten aunque no hayan enviado comentarios. Asegúrense de dejar su correo electrónico en el chat o de enviarlo a el correo electrónico dwq_bswp@dep.nj.gov si quiere recibir una copia. Tengan en cuenta que el periodo para enviar comentarios públicos terminará el 13 de febrero de 2023 a las 17:59 de la noche. Si desean presentar comentarios públicos de manera verbal hoy, escriban su nombre, organización, y correo electrónico en el chat y los llamaremos por nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llame, digan y deletren su nombre y apellido con claridad para el registro. Tenemos un taquigrofo judicial asignado para transcribir el testimonio grabado. Si alguien hablara en representación de una organización, le pedimos que identifique la organización. Queremos escuchar a todos y darles la oportunidad de hablar aquí. Debido al tiempo limitado, les pido que su testimonio no exceda los cinco minutos. Cada uno solamente podrá hablar una vez hasta que escuchemos a todas las personas que están aquí y desean dar testimonio. En caso de que el tiempo lo permita, y sea posible hacerlo al final de la audiencia, si una persona desea declarar por segunda vez, haremos todo lo posible para permitírselo. Pedimos que todos los que hablen y los miembros de la audiencia respeten el derecho de cada persona presente a ser escuchada y que eviten las conductas que podrían interferir con la presentación del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluye el testimonio o al mediodía, lo que ocurre primero. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora se lee en español por uno de nuestros empleados, Marcelo Gracia. Después, le daremos la palabra a Jonathan Laquetran, que presentará una descripción general de Microsoft Teams. A continuación, Joe Manick dará información factual sobre los permisos de Nejipnis. Joe es el jefe de sección de la Oficina de Permisos de Agua de Superficie y Pretatamiento.
John, ¿estás listo? Estás en mute.
Hi, mi nombre es Jonathan Laquetron y soy ingeniero ambiental en el programa Nejipnis. Para informar al oficial de la audiencia pública de NJDIP sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal, mueve tu cursor hacia abajo para abrir la barra de reuniones del equipo, que aparecerá hacia abajo de tu pantalla. Haz clic en el icono del chat para abrir la barra de reuniones en el lado de la pantalla. Escribe tu nombre completo y el nombre de la organización que representas y tu email address en el campo "Type new message" en la parte inferior de la barra de reuniones. Cuando entres en esta información, usa el siguiente formato: nombre, apellido, organización, y email. Mira por ejemplo. Haz clic en el icono de enviar o presionas Enter en tu teclado para enviar tu mensaje y notificar al oficial de audiencia de Nejipnis tu interés en enviar testimonio verbal. Para desmute tu micrófono para enviar testimonio verbal, mueve tu cursor para abrir la barra de reuniones del equipo. Si estás mute, el icono de mute aparecerá. Haz clic en el icono de mute para desmute tu micrófono. El icono de mute cambiará a un símbolo de micrófono y comenzará tu testimonio verbal. Para desmute tu micrófono después de enviar testimonio verbal, mueve tu cursor hacia abajo para abrir la barra de reuniones del equipo y haz clic en el icono de micrófono para desmute tu micrófono. El icono de micrófono cambiará a el icono de mute. Para turnar tu video feed durante el escuchamiento público, mueve tu cursor para abrir la barra de reuniones del equipo. Si tu video está off, el icono de video off aparecerá. Haz clic en el icono de video para turnar tu video feed on y el icono de video off se convertirá en una cámara regular. Haz clic en el icono de cámara para turnar tu video feed off. El icono de video se convertirá en un icono de video off. La misma información que acabamos de leer ahora estará en español por Marcelo Gracia. Entonces, Joe Manick proporcionará un overview de los permisos que fueron emitidos.
Hola, mi nombre es Jonathan Laquetran y soy ingeniero ambiental en el programa Nejipnis. Para informar al oficial de la audiencia pública de NJDIP sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para que aparezca la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Hazle clic en el ícono de mensajes para abrir el chat de la reunión a un lado de su pantalla. Escribes tu nombre completo y el nombre de la organización que representes y su correo electrónico en el campo que dice "Type a new message", escribe un mensaje nuevo en la parte inferior del chat de la reunión. Cuando escribes esta información, usa el formato nombre más apellido más organización más correo electrónico. Vea el ejemplo de abajo en la pantalla. Haz clic en el ícono de mandar, operaciones la tecla Enter en su secado para enviar su mensaje y notificar al oficial de la audiencia pública sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal. Para activar su micrófono para presentar su testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para abrir la barra de herramientas de reuniones de team. Si su micrófono está silenciado, si ve el ícono de micrófono con una barra a través, haga clic en ese mismo ícono para activar su micrófono. El ícono cambiará a un micrófono sin la barra a través. Ahora empiece a dar su testimonio verbal. Para silenciar su micrófono después de presentar su testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para que aparezca la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams y haga clic en el ícono de micrófono para silenciarlo. El ícono cambiará a un micrófono con una barra a través. ¿Cómo activar su cámara durante la audiencia pública? Mueve su cursor para abrir la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams. Si su video está apagado, aparece el ícono de cámara con una barra a través. Haga clic en ese ícono para activar su video. El ícono de cámara cambiará a una cámara sin una línea a través. Para apagar su cámara, haga clic en el ícono de cámara y el ícono cambiará a una cámara con una línea a través. Si se ha conectado por teléfono y desea hablar hoy, intente avisarnos entre los testimonios de los presentadores. Esta misma información que acabo de leer será leída ahora en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después, Joe Manick presentará un resumen de los permisos que se han otorgado.
Hola, mi nombre es Joe Manick y soy jefe de sección en el Bureau de Surface Water and Pre-Treatment Permitting. Y me gustaría darle un poco de contexto al tema del escuchamiento de hoy. La renovación de los permisos Nejipnis para la autoridad municipal de servicios públicos de North Bergen, Puente de Trabajo de Tratación de Agua, o Puente de Tratación de Agua, STP, número NJ0029084 y el número de permiso de Gottenberg, NJ0108715. Estos permisos fueron emitidos el 9 de diciembre de 2022 y están publicados en el sitio web de la División de calidad de Agua de NJDIP. Como stated en los permisos de draft, el periodo de comentarios terminará a las 11:59 PM en febrero 13, 2023, en concordancia con NJAC 714A-1510 y 1514. Los permisos emitidos son permisos de superficie individual para sistemas de suministro de aguas combinadas y su planta de tratación de agua, la Puente de Tratación de Agua, STP. Los suministros combinados o CSOs son descargas de sistemas combinados. Los sistemas combinados son aguas que se diseñaron hace muchas décadas para recolectar agua de lluvia y niebla, agua doméstica y aguas industriales en la misma tubería. Los sistemas combinados todavía están presentes en ciertas ciudades antiguas del estado. North Bergen MUA y la ciudad de Gottenberg poseen partes separadas de un sistema de suministro hidrológico combinado. Estos sistemas de recolección fluyen a la Puente de Tratación de Agua, STP, que es propiedad de la ciudad municipal de North Bergen. Cuando la capacidad de transporte del sistema de recolección y/o la Puente de Tratación de Agua, STP, excede, exceso de suministro combinado fluye a los desbordamientos de suministro combinado. Los dos desbordamientos de suministro combinado y la planta de tratación de agua descargada a la Riva Hudson se clasifican como categoría estuary 2, categoría 2, agua, según las normas de calidad de agua de NJDIP. Para cumplir con las regulaciones federales y estatales de CSO, los permitentes han comprometido a cumplir con las requisitas de la aproximación de presunción, que requiere la eliminación o captura de un mínimo del 85% del suministro combinado anual recogido en el sistema durante el tiempo de sequía. Actualmente, los permitentes están en el 89% de captura. Los proyectos propuestos en este permiso se proyectan para exceder aún más el 85% de captura. Estos proyectos, que incluyen infraestructura gris y verde, se proyectan a alcanzar el 92% de captura, lo que excede el 85%. El elemento principal del plan de control a largo plazo para ambos permitentes es la actualización de la Puente de Tratación de Agua, STP, para aumentar la capacidad de sequía de las instalaciones y también la capacidad anual media. Además de la expansión de la STP, los permitentes incorporarán proyectos de infraestructura verde, de infiltración y reducción de flujo, de separación de aguas de tormento y sanitaria y mejoras de calefacción. Algunos de estos proyectos también ayudarán a abordar el inundación local. Según el plan de control a largo plazo y las requisitas de permiso Nejipnis, estos proyectos se proyectan a ser completados en los próximos cinco años. La misma información que acabamos de leer será... Marcelo, después de eso, volveremos a Sue Rosenwinkle y comenzaremos a tomar testimonio.
Hola, mi nombre es Joe Manick y soy el jefe de sección en la Oficina de Permisos de Aguas de Superficie y Pretatamiento. Les quiero compartir algo de información de fondo sobre el tema de la audiencia de hoy. La renovación de los permisos de Nejipnis para la autoridad municipal de servicios públicos de North Bergen, planta de tratamientos de aguas residuales de Woodcliff o Woodcliff STP, número de permisos NJOO029084 y la ciudad de Gutenberg, número de permisos NJ0108715. Estos permisos se otorgaron el 9 de diciembre de 2022 y están publicados en el sitio web de la División de Calidad del Agua de NJDIP. Como se indica en los borradores de los permisos, el periodo de comentarios terminará el 13 de febrero de 2023 a las 17:59 PM, de acuerdo con los artículos 714A a 15.10 y 15.14, el Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey. Los permisos otorgados son permisos individuales de superficie de Nejipnis para un sistema de alcantarillado combinado y la planta receptora de tratamiento de aguas residuales Woodcliff STP. Los desbordamientos de alcantarillados combinados o, si es eso, son descargas de sistemas de alcantarillado combinado. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado son alcantarillas que se diseñaron hace décadas para recolectar el agua de lluvia y de cielo, aguas residuales domésticas y aguas residuales industriales en la misma turbina. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado todavía están presentes en algunas ciudades más antiguas del estado. North Bergen MUA y la ciudad de Gutenberg son propietarios de porciones separadas de un sistema de alcantarillado combinado conectado de manera hidráulica. Estos sistemas de recolección fluyen hacia Woodcliff STP, que pertenece a North Bergen MUA. Cuando se excede la carga de transporte del sistema de recolección y/o la Puente de Tratación de Agua STP, el exceso de aguas residuales combinadas pasa por los desagües de desbordamiento de alcantarillado combinado. Los dos desagües de aguas residuales combinadas y la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales vierten en el río Hudson, cuyos agües se clasifican en la categoría estuary salino 2, categoría 2, según los estándares de calidad de agua de superficie de NJDIP. Para cumplir con las regulaciones estatales y federales de CSO, los permissionarios se han comprometido a cumplir con los requisitos del enfoque de presunción que exige la eliminación o la captura de un mínimo de 85% del promedio anual de aguas residuales combinadas recolectadas por el sistema durante tiempo lluvioso. En la actualidad, el nivel de captura de los permissionarios es el 89%. Se prevé que los proyectos propuestos en este permiso superan la captura mínima de 85%. Con esos proyectos, que incluyen infraestructura gris y verde, se prevé captar el 92%, lo que excede el 85%. El componente principal del plan de control a largo plazo que ya se presentó para los permissionarios es la mejora de la Puente de Tratación de Agua STP para aumentar la capacidad en tiempo lluvioso de la instalación y la capacidad mensual promedio. Además de la expansión de la STP, los permissionarios incorporaron proyectos de infraestructura verde, proyectos para reducir la influencia y la infiltración, la separación del drenaje sanitario y el drenaje pluvial y mejoras en las cámaras de redes de alcantarillado. Algunos de estos proyectos también ayudarán con la indención localizadas. Según el plan de control a largo plazo y los requisitos propuestos de los permisos de Nejipnis, se prevé finalizar estos proyectos en los próximos cinco años. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora se lee en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después, volveremos con Sue Rosenwinkle y empezaremos a tomar testimonios.
Great, gracias Marcelo. Ok, vamos a empezar a recibir testimonio. Nicole, parece que estás primero.
Say what? Hello, uh, well, thank you, Sue and Joe and the entire team. I'm sure I speak for many when I say we're excited. We're getting started with the process and I just have a few things. I know there are a few people who want to speak, so my main concern is, of course, in thinking about the permits, the recommendations should be... Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Nicole Miller, N-I-C-O-L-E-M-I-L-L-E-R. I am the chair, co-chair of Newark Dig, doing infrastructure green. Please let me know if I forgot another portion of the requirements upfront. But, uh, going back to the permit portion, we asked that the permits be as specific and prescriptive as possible and that guidance be provided alongside the permit whenever possible, the permits as they're being released. We have noted that in the past, when the guidance was released a year or more after the permit had been released, then there had been some confusion and we want to be able to cut down on confusion whenever possible, as well as wasted effort by the permittees. Additionally, we want to thank you for including the long-term control coordinator position from within each individual community to be able to help shepherd the process of community engagement. This is an excellent step and we're thankful for that. We would like to see, however, that the role be more... The roles and responsibilities for that position be outlined more clearly, as well as how the position will across all CSO communities be much more clearly trained and defined so that that role is common across those municipalities, as well as if there will be a DEP-approved training manual or guidance of some sort for that particular position. When we're talking about the CSO supplemental team members, we're excited to see that that is also a continuing requirement and we would like to find out how DEP will ensure that all of the permittees have a cross-sector representation from their various communities, including the overburdened areas of their community, and how they will ensure that the input from those supplemental team members are taken into account as the construction implementation of the long-term control plans continue. Similarly, when we move on to the green infrastructure, understandably, I think for North Bergen and for Gottenberg, the green infrastructure control measures are necessarily limited. We would like to see, however, an understanding. I think that for the long-term control plan, there had been a technical letter that had been sent to North Bergen-Gottenberg and perhaps a response was received, but we were not able to see that. So I think there might be a little bit of a gap in our understanding of what North Bergen-Gottenberg have in their particular responses. But as of the last, the original long-term control plan that was received in 2020, there was a 10-year timeline for the work to be completed and the green infrastructure was relegated to the last five years of that plan and we hope that will be included much earlier in the plan, as well as more information being shared about the two large green infrastructure projects on the North Bergen portion that were totally around $217,000 each. We would like to see more information about what that will be and how these projects will be maintained going forward. And moving on to the... Sorry, I got distracted. Moving on to the ongoing maintenance, similarly, we want to find out what sort of metrics will be utilized for the performance of specifically of the green infrastructure systems. But for all systems, it's not really clear how these plans will be not only outlined for the green infrastructure, how they'll be ongoingly maintained, but also what the funding will be for those systems. They are... That is unclear at this time. Similarly, on the funding plan, we did not see how the DEP will ensure affordability for this plan. We have seen in the past that several of the community members have submitted recommendations that the DEP provide guidance on innovative funding solutions, including rate restructuring, combined sewer stormwater fee feasibility studies, etc. And we would like to know how DEP will ensure affordability for these plans across the board. And so that's all I'm going to share. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak and I will give up the rest of my time if I have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. That was great. And everyone, just Nicole did a perfect... She said her name, spelled her name, organization. That's really helpful to us, so thank you for that. Okay, I think up next we have Johan of Bike North Bergen. Want to go ahead and start?
Hi, good morning. Johan Andrade, J-O-H-A-N-D-R-A-D-E. I'm the president of Bike North Bergen. So I've been a North Bergen resident for over 20 years and I've seen the increasing damage rainstorm have caused in our area. So I'd like to thank the NJDP for starting the work to hopefully remedy these issues. And I also like to thank you for providing the flexibility for having the meetings for this hearing today. That's really appreciated. I do have a small request and if you're able to make these meetings more visible on the website, I noticed that if I go to the calendar page, this meeting is not listed there and the only way I knew about this meeting was that someone else reached out to me. And also to only have the link live on the day of the meeting limits community engagement, in my opinion. As far as the... As far as things on the permit, I do have a few questions. How would the NJDP ensure that members of overburdened communities are represented in this process? And will this supplemental team be accessible to all the community members? Who will make up this supplemental team and how would that team be assembled? And one other question is, can the DEP have a requirement where the amount of raw sewage released in local flooding be measured and reported back to the community? You know, just from a public health perspective and bring some awareness to the community on these floodings from raw sewage. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Uh, great. Thank you very much for that. Okay, next I think we have Patricia. Is it Dunkack from New Jersey Future?
Hi, yes, this is Patricia Dunkack, P-A-T-R-I-C-I-A-D-U-N-K-A-K with New Jersey Future. So first of all, I would just like to say thank you to the DEP for this public hearing. We really appreciate the opportunity to provide comments that will allow for increased public engagement and are a step towards improving water quality. New Jersey Future is largely in support of this permit and supports requirements to reduce combined sewer discharge to improve water quality. Addressing water quality issues by reducing flooding and CSO discharge and ensuring the proper maintenance of infrastructure are important tools to protect public health, the environment, and economic redevelopment. We ask that the final permit have clear conditions for permittees and that the DEP create guidance documents whenever possible. Here are some areas that we think need some clarification. The first area is in green infrastructure, so we support the department's prioritization. infrastructure, so we support the department's prioritization of green infrastructure projects in the first five years that will improve water quality, reduce localized flooding, and increase wet weather CSO capture. So our first question is, how can DEP ensure that green infrastructure is explored as part of gray infrastructure projects? To maximize benefits from the green roof ordinance, can you include a requirement that this ordinance be implemented sooner than 2026? And what will be the enforcement mechanism to ensure that green infrastructure practices are being properly maintained? The next area that we think needs some clarification is around climate resilience and climate change, so we are happy to see that the facility floodproofing plan is based on sea level rise data that will protect the plant from climate threats. How will DEP incorporate NJPACT rules into this permit and future permits? Will future hydrologic and hydraulic modeling be updated based on precipitation data and modeling from the Northeast Regional Climate Center released in November 2021? And the last area we have some questions around is around funding and affordability, so we appreciate that affordability is being incorporated into the asset management plan. This permit should not extend the timeline for requirements to reduce rate increases as this will extend the time that the community faces environmental and public health issues. So our first question is, can DEP be more specific in their guidance to permit holders around cost-effective, innovative financing opportunities to help finance this work equitably, such as IBank low interest loan programs, utilizing green infrastructure grants and more? And also there's no mention of the distribution of costs, so is there a consideration of fair distribution of costs between municipal and utility permit holders applied across all permates? Again, thank you so much and we look forward to your responses.
Okay, great, thank you Patricia. And for those of you that testified, if you'd be willing, if you have something written, if you'd be willing to send that to our website, it does make it a little bit easier for the stenographer, but we'll leave that up to you. Okay, next up is Haley Benson of North Bergen Earth Talks and a volunteer for North Bergen's official green board. Haley? Sorry Haley, I think you're on mute, you gotta start over, sorry about that. We're showing you is on mute, I don't know if it's working.
So she just adds to move on to the next one and maybe we can come back?
Okay, sure, okay. Stephanie Martinez of North Bergen Earth Talks, volunteer. Good Stephanie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes we can, thank you.
My name is Stephanie Martinez, S-T-E-P-H-A-N-I-E-M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z. I'm a North Bergen Earth Talks volunteer and firstly, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have this public portion hearing, making it virtual as well and recording it. I do want to mention that for the next meetings, if we can have like the registration link not be the date of the meeting, it does make it inaccessible to some people, especially when it's through like another app that not a lot of people are used to. And all in all, I'm so glad to be hearing about this permit and hopefully there are specific and prescriptive guidance as soon as possible, because as we see, flooding is getting worse and unfortunately, my municipality does not offer these types of options, making it inaccessible to attend important meetings like these. So since it is required in the CSO permit that there's engagement with the public, how will NJDP ensure that we, the public, have easy accessibility and have our voices heard? Thank you.
Great, thank you Stephanie. Haley, you want to try again?
Can you guys hear me now?
Oh, we can, thank you.
Great, so good morning, I was born and raised in, oh wait, first let me start off, my name is Haley Benson, H-A-I-L-E-Y-B-E-N-S-O-N, and I am part of MB Earth Talks, as well as on the green, or I'm a liaison for the Green Board in North Bergen. So good morning, I was born and raised in North Bergen and have bore witness to so many torrential downpours and the resulting sewage in my basement following, so gross, I know. I'm so grateful that we are granted the first opportunity of the seven regional permits to fix our destitute sewer systems. Thank you all for creating such a thorough permit, we are hopeful these hearings will help to refine the document so future permits have a guideline standard. I must ask, in our ever-urbanized community, how can the DEP ensure that green infrastructure is explored as part of gray infrastructure? Also, the benefit from the few green infrastructure projects can really be maximized by having them start sooner than projected. Can you include a requirement that the green roof ordinance be implemented ASAP in Gutenberg rather than wait until 2026? Can you also adjust the implementation plan in Gutenberg for the 100 planter boxes so they're installed in the next five years rather than 10 years? I would also like to reiterate Nicole's point that there is a lack of green infrastructure clarification in North Bergen's permit. Can green infrastructure projects one and two be explained in full detail so that requirements are followed strictly? I also ask that the permit require a mechanism for assurance that the gray infrastructure will not have cumulative negative impacts on overburdened communities. As being a volunteer of the North Bergen Green Board, I recognize the importance of public participation. Currently, the permit is vague as to ensuring that the members of the community, and especially those from overburdened communities, are included in public engagement. How will the committee ensure the community can contribute to the supplemental team and that majority community members are aware of the opportunity? I would like to request that once team members are identified for the supplemental team, they're listed on the website with clear methods to get in contact with them. Meeting accessibility is also described as something to be quote, "kept in mind with few specific suggestions." I would love to see a development of minimum requirements around the number of supplemental team meetings to be held annually, as well as require a mechanism to capture input and feedback. I will definitely be sending my notes via the email as well, thank you guys so much for your time and I hope that I can help make this permit super great for all of us, thank you.
Thank you Haley, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a teams meeting unless there was some mute issue, so, okay, next up I think is Paloma with North Bergen Earth Talks, and Michelle, you're right after that. Do we have Paloma?
Hi, yeah, hi, my name is Paloma Vizcaino, that's P-A-L-O-M-A-V-I-Z-C-A-I-N-O, and I'm a volunteer for MB Earth Talks. I know that in our community, green initiatives may not be the first priority, but it's clear that the sewage overflow issue that we deal with here in this part of New Jersey is untenable and we need to do something about it. And I wanted to ask, will the DEP require alerts and notification systems, not just for the Hudson River discharges, but in advance of potential sewer backups and street and basement flooding? That's it.
Okay, great, thank you Paloma. Okay, Michelle, looks like you're up.
Hi, so Michelle Langa, M-I-C-H-E-L-E-L-A-N-G-A, and I am with Hackensack Riverkeeper and New York and Jersey Baykeeper, as well as Sewage Free Streets and Rivers. First, I just want to say thank you to Sue and to Joe and to the whole team at DEP for getting these permits out, it's been a long road and it's exciting to finally get to talk about actual permits for CSO, so that's, that's great, thank you. At, in an effort to save some time, I'm just going to say that I echo what Nicole has already mentioned and we will be submitting written comments to sort of enlighten and expand on that. And then I would add to that, that the section on adaptive management and climate guidance is, it's fantastic to see that in the permit, we're excited that it's, it's being considered seriously as, as part of the permitting for, for CSO management. And around that, I really just have a question, which is, will the issuance of a CSO permit preclude any future NJPACT rules, which we, maybe happened this year for the inland flood, I'm not 100% sure, but I think that that will happen? Will that preclude the permates from having to apply those rules to permit, to projects? Or will those projects, if they are not yet permitted, be required to follow the new rules? I would hope that they, if they have not been permitted already, will be required to follow the new rules, so I look forward to an answer on that. And it would be really great to see, as Nicole mentioned, the guidance, especially around climate threats and NJPACT rules to come out with the permit so that everybody is on the same page with, with how that works. And so, thank you. All done.
Thank you Michelle. Okay, next up I think we have Suzanne Atman, and that's the last one I have, so if anybody else is interested in testifying, please go ahead and put your name in the chat. Well, we'll hand it off to you Suzanne.
Thanks, hi Sue. Suzanne Atman, S-U-Z-A-N-N-E-A-P-T-M-A-N. I'm on the advisory board of Sewage Free Streets and Rivers and I'm also a program manager at New Jersey Future. So I want to echo what many folks are sharing already and just start off again by thanking the DEP for all of their hard work getting us to this milestone. And emphasize again how important it is to look at the language of this permit and still see what opportunities there are to strengthen the language so that we're not using conditional language that could leave things open for interpretation. So wherever we can require, or DEP can require, that would be great. And where you can't, as, as others are sharing, if you can create a separate guidance document that's very specific, very prescriptive, which will just help the permit holders and help the public to feel more ease, that would be wonderful. So I think that's, that's, I guess my first question is, will, will you be providing such a guidance that is prescriptive, specific? Also want to, a lot of great things were already shared, so let me see. In terms of supplemental team meetings, I think you heard some folks asking some questions around that, hoping that a similar framework can be applied to the project-based meetings, so there's going to be supplemental team meetings and project-based meetings, so the same kind of rigor around public notice and public engagement, ensuring that folks from overburdened communities are engaged, participating, and that the outreach methods that are utilized really do reach out to and give access to, you know, 100% of the community, so hopefully that's, that's the goal. So I guess my question around that is, how will DEP ensure that 100% of the community is aware of meetings where they can participate on and attend? In terms of gray infrastructure, will the DEP be requiring that the citing of gray infrastructure will not have negative cumulative impacts on overburdened communities? That's something that wasn't clear from the permit. Also, in terms of, just, in terms of water quality and monitoring, we know that, that the permit describes monitoring near CSO outfalls and to provide even more beneficial water quality protection to the public, will the permit be required to conduct water quality sampling near CSO outfalls during implementation of the LTCP projects and during wet weather events that generate overflow? The system cleaning program, it's great that that is being required, wonderful. What will the DEP do if the permit does not comply annually on that program? And if they do not meet the 100% inspection and cleaning of the system at the end of the five-year period? And similar in terms of enforcement, how will NJDP inspect and enforce it all projects, including green infrastructure? So how, how, how are you going to ensure that the permit is complying with the maintenance plan for all projects, essentially? Can the DEP be more specific, and somebody else mentioned this, on, and educate and work with the municipality and other cost-effective mechanisms for innovative finance opportunities? And I think that's all I'll share for now, but overall, in terms of public engagement, how can the DEP ensure that the public is aware of the meetings, how they can be part of the supplemental team, where they can find this information, how they can, how a clear feedback loop of how public input is integrated into the plans, the designs, moving forward, and how that information is then shared back to the community, you know, in a detailed way, so that everybody's engaged, informed, participating as, as these projects roll out? Thank you so much and look forward to hearing your response.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, next up we have Rachel Dawn Davis, and then we'll move over to Dan Kennedy. Rachel?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. Rachel Davis, R-A-C-H-E-L-D-A-V-I-S. Thank you for the opportunity to speak virtually and for this foundation, NJDP. I'm speaking on behalf of Water Spirit's thousands of intergenerational members from throughout the entire state, the Northeast region, and our allies with the most affected victims of environmental racism and ecological sin here, across Turtle Island and globally. Thank you, especially to Sewage Free Streets and Rivers. I am going to first emphasize the question, how will NJDP ensure various languages and methods of communication are employed throughout this process and ongoing inclusive, and how will it maintain inclusivity of the majority of New Jersey state residents, starting with this first geographic location? And I will share that Water Spirit is the Ministry of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace, and we're 25 years old. When we listen to each other's stories of affected residents and property owners, students, parents, community leaders, it's difficult to look away from the repetitive trauma caused by floods and flooding. We speak to echo the dire need of cumulatively affected and impacted residents by antiquated combined sewer overflow systems and the environmental racism they continue to represent through purposefully slipshod infrastructure. A USA Today article backed November of 2021 quotes New Jersey's own Martha Arancibia, a repeat flood victim in Patterson, but it still seems she had to share her story last week in 2023 to bring New Jersey policy up to speed. So I want to really emphasize, we must meet the urgency of hazardous waste flooding with equitable urgent policy reforms. So thank you to NJDP's IBank and our diverse partners in bringing a four-part webinar series focusing on just this stormwater management and environmental justice, available on our YouTube channel, and I'll drop the link in the chat, waterspirit.org. Practical action and practical applications are why we're here speaking today, so we're echoing many things that were said and we'll share written comments. I'm directing my comments and questions to NJDP and the permit holder. Water Spirit's mission is to critically hear the cry of the earth and the cry of the poor. So Patricia also shared, is there a cost NJDP and, and permit holder? A consideration of fair distribution of costs between municipal and utility permit holders applied across all permates? We and our partners think general permit conditions should be referenced, whether they're applicable or not, and then noted that the condition is not applicable in a particular instance. Green infrastructure has a greater impact than gray infrastructure projects, depending upon where you are and what you're doing. So echoing the need for affordability planning, maintenance planning that Nicole spoke of earlier, the question is, how can NJDP ensure the green infrastructure is explored as part of gray infrastructure projects? I am a certified green infrastructure champion. NJDP, are you aware that Rutgers' own expert, Dr. Abrupta, is teaching a course on green infrastructure championship right now? It has been good to see more decision makers and policy leaders taking in that course, specifically, I know some of them are signed up for this round. There are already 300 people who are certified green infrastructure champions throughout the state, who can help with the all-hands-on-deck necessary assessment of green infrastructure throughout the entire state, again, starting with this specific area under focus today. So an acceleration of timeframe is needed, I'm going to emphasize that. NJDP, will you please include a requirement that the green roof ordinance be implemented ASAP rather than wait until 2026? A little story, last World Water Day, I fielded a question about a green roof, what it was, from an adult who was actually charged with funding green infrastructure projects. This was not from a who was actually charged with funding green infrastructure projects. This was not from a student. So to maximize benefits from the green roof ordinance, can you, NJDP, please require, include a requirement that this ordinance be implemented, again, as soon as possible? Implementation for the 100 planter boxes, again, adjust that timeframe from five years to five years rather than 10 years, because we really just don't have the time. The science is clear and we're, you know, the new state is suing Exxon. Finally, all of this accountability is coming full circle ideally. But again, to make it, to bring it back to this state, a question did come up at that World Water Day event from a student about the long-term control plan and why it takes so long to implement the plan. So I want to echo, we must know what we have before moving forward in any project. So making a baseline requirement for what a long-term control plan coordinator role entails, as Nicole shared, spelling out what the responsibilities are, is vital. So a question, does NJDP have a standard for this coordinator role? So it's measurable, available to the public, and will something similar be drafted for the permit holder? The questions we're asking in writing will address more technical aspects. Echoing Suzanne's question regarding enforcement, which is something I, I bring often, maintenance of green infrastructure and related planning is the key to ensuring its durability. So how is NJDP working on enforcement? And in closing, we echo the need for appropriate marketing and communications and languages that are spoken, again, in the areas most affected by CSO systems. Thank you again, and thank you, everyone, and we look forward to learning more and remain available as a resource.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, Dan Kennedy, you're up.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to give a little bit here. Dan Kennedy, D A N K E N N E D Y, Senior Director with Utility and Transportation Contractors Association. I want to just start off by congratulating the Department, the Bureau, for all the hard work over the, the years, been quite some time. We stand to support this permit and those that will come after it. We're encouraged to see a detailed schedule. You see on page 27 of the fact sheet, you know, we can see a very clear set of projects, both green and gray, that the permit will have to proceed with to meet the required minimum wet weather percentage capture of 92%. The, I don't know what the green and the gray split is, but I'm going to presume that a lot of that benefit is going to be coming through the gray infrastructure side, complemented by the green infrastructure. We're in a great position in the state of New Jersey, well, better than we have, we have been in the past with infrastructure funding. We've got a tremendous asset in the state of New Jersey of the Infrastructure Bank. The Water Bank has more capacity, more funding now than it has in, in the history of the program. One way the Department can help accelerate these benefits, whether they're green or gray, would be to make sure that projects going through the Infrastructure Bank are, are done quickly. The rules at NJAC 722 were put together in the 70s and 80s. They need to be updated, and those updates would help move projects forward with INI reduction, upgrades to the Dedding Chamber and others. We think that's definitely needed. The Department has finally gone through and moved forward on having a group of outside engineer support, the great Department staff in the, on the IBank side, to make sure these projects can get engineered, designed, and permitted. So we would just encourage the Department to approach these projects and implementation, be as supportive as you've been the permit development process as you will be for implementation. We hope that the Department, through other divisions and bureaus, will be supportive of this permatee and others and the local governments that have to basically get all these projects designed, permitted, procured, and constructed, which is going to take a lot of work. The members of UTCA stand ready to assist in that process, and we encourage you to move forward on this and other permits. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Dan. Okay, the time is 11:01, so I'm going to offer, if anyone who's already testified would like to testify again, or if anybody new would like to testify, please go ahead and put your name in the chat. Okay, I'm not, yes, Haley, please, go ahead. And, and I'm sorry, Haley, if you could repeat your name and organization again for the stenographer.
Of course. My name is, you guys can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Haley Benson, H A I L E Y B E N S O N. I'm with MB Earth Talks and the Green Board of North Bergen. I just wanted to mention briefly, just to share a little bit more of the experience with North Bergen's Green Board and leadership. I just would love to make sure that, reiterating Suzanne's point, having things be very clear in the documents and having a very clear outline for all of the plans, but specifically the green infrastructure plans that will continue to help our urban community restore its natural environment. We have had situations in the past where North Bergen hasn't been super receptive to green projects. So I just want to ensure that we have the support from the NJDP in order to make sure that we have those projects in place in a very clear and guided manner so that it's super smooth and easy for, for North Bergen to adopt. Just to mention briefly, yeah, the, right after the Hurricane Irene, the most recent one, that was devastating and resulted in the lives of 30 people in the community, both in Queens and New Jersey, 30 lives being lost. After that, we had organized an effort to speak with the Board of Commissioners for North Bergen about our concerns and how we could possibly fix the sewage infrastructure and help in our communities. And I'm super grateful that, you know, we have this opportunity now to invest. But at the time, we were met with much hesitation and concern that it, the perspective of it not being North Bergen's fault necessarily. I think it's very important that we ensure that our political officials are aware that we can all make a difference, no matter whose fault it is in the end. So I would really appreciate any clarity, suggestions, or guidance, or support from the NJDP, the supplemental team, and et cetera, in making sure that our, the, the plans are very clear and, and community-focused. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Haley. Appreciate that. Okay, Dan, is it Shapley?
It is, thank you.
Okay, great, go ahead, thank you.
Dan Shapley with Hudson River Keeper, S H A P L E Y is my last name. And I'm not prepared to give detailed comments today, but I did want to say generally that the combined sewer overflows in the New Jersey portion of the Hudson River amount to about 10% of the, the number of overflow points affecting the Hudson River estuary throughout its reach from, from Troy down to New Jersey and New York City. So these are important to us with our, our mission to protect and restore the Hudson River. The Hudson River is receiving, you know, the attention of, of many more recreational users, thanks to the recovery to date. You've got the New York City Triathlon and other public swim events that are taking place in this reach on the Hudson. A lot of kayaking, a lot of other activities on both the Jersey and New York City shoreline. So we are keen to see the, the DEP complete this process and implement these permits, get these long-term control plans implemented as aggressively and as thoroughly as possible so that we can reduce and eliminate the sewage overflows affecting the Hudson and, of course, all the other waters that would, that are affected by these, these permits across the state that are affecting other tributaries in New York Harbor and other waterways in New Jersey are also important, but we're particularly focused on these affecting the Hudson, starting with these two in the communities that you're, that you're looking at. So I just want to urge you to, you know, definitely underscore the comments I'm hearing today about the importance of engaging and listening to the community and focusing on environmental justice and these issues and their intersection of water quality and environmental justice. And to maximize the use of green infrastructure, I'm hearing that a lot from community members and certainly taking that to heart. We want to just make sure that the, the overall goal of, of reducing these overflows is, is maintained and, and supported. Thank you for the opportunity to talk, and we look forward to, to learning more and commenting more over time.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, looks like Suzanne would like to say a few more words. And if anyone else would like to testify again or testify for the first time, please go ahead and put your name in the chat. Suzanne?
Yes, thank you. Suzanne Aptman, S U Z A N N E A P T M A N. Hearing Dan speak earlier, Dan Kennedy, it reminded me of an important point that I wanted to make and a question, which is around, one great thing about this permit is that you have a shorter timeline, right, 10 years to completion. So I, I hope that with future permits, while they might be addressing a much larger area, you know, I hope that acceleration of the timeline, getting to a shorter timeline can, can be put, prioritized so that we can reduce exposure to pollution in our waterways and, and streets and basements as soon as possible. And at the same time, encouraging, urging that we maintain affordability for all ratepayers, right? So that, we're hoping that the timelines don't get stretched in order to reduce the impact on ratepayers, you know, the fees. But that we can find a way to shorten the timelines and maintain affordability for ratepayers. And, you know, we, we do have experts that we work with in, in this area who are willing to work with NJDP and the permit holders to, to identify ways to achieve both goals. We think that's possible and that could be the standard. So if, if that's something that DP is willing to explore with us, please, please let us know. And just finally, I don't know if you're able to comment in this way during the session, but would it be possible to explain to the public who is here what the next steps are around the comments that folks just made? Will there be a response? Will there only be a response to questions? Just, just so that folks who are busy can walk away with a sense of that, and maybe you're going to do that already. Thank you.
I can do that. So some of that was in the opening testimony that I started with, but let me just repeat that relevant piece. So basically, any comments here or in writing, we will provide a response to, and it'll be part of the final permit package. We will post the final decision online. And also, if you provide comments, we will send you a copy of the final permit package. So that's partly why Jonathan is asking you for email addresses. The comment period will expire at 11:59 PM, February 13th. Any other questions about the process? Okay, anybody else like to testify? Okay, so it is 11:11. We have another hearing tonight at, at 6:00 PM. So the, the link is in the same location on the website, and you just, you know, hit the button to request to join. And I guess I'm going to call the hearing to a close. So it's 11:11 AM. I'd really like to thank everybody for your participation, and maybe we'll see some of you tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.